Your end.
Okay, thanks for coming. We'll convene to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again for coming. We'll go ahead and start with the approval of the agenda. Any additions?
I don't have any additions out other than you say that there was an item in Dropbox that accidentally was placed in Dropbox. It wasn't numbered, but it's been deleted.
Okay, so if you saw something go there and come back, it wasn't supposed to be there. Dan, anything?
I have nothing. Nothing for me.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, on favor said aye.
Aye.
opposed. Consent agenda. Any questions for... On that. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Lonnie. Second?
I'll show them.
Thanks Mel. All in favor said aye.
Aye.
opposed. Cares unanimously. I'm a visiting visitor tonight. Mayor's report, a couple of things. Council saw the email from Liza regarding the hiring of the new city administrator. How that process is going along. Just for the public, we have eight applications so far submitted to the hiring firm. They'll take those through September 26th. On October 23rd, they'll present us with a list of candidates to go through and select a slate of finalists. Then on November 12th and 13th, with interviews, select a candidate on the evening of the 13th. And the consultant firm will then negotiate a contract with that person. After that, with a hire date in December. So that process is moving along. Liza's sent a lot of interest and eight hard applications so far. That's great. Just an update, I did put out on social media this afternoon, Goudas County issued a flood watch warning for tonight due tomorrow. So I shared that and also shared a little bit with Charlie, the Public Works Director Bradford emailed us this morning. I think, I don't know if everybody was on that, but Public Works is ready. They've got extra people on call tonight and tomorrow in the event that we'd have to call somebody out. Pumps are already loaded in the truck and ready to go. So Public Works is on that. He emailed this morning to let me know that was going, so like to see the proactivity of that. And we'll do what we can do in an unpredictable situation that we can't control. Building updates, you see this hot corner we have going on up here. The Counseling Center looks like, I think last time I talked to Ron, he was hoping for sometime in September. And then Casey's, I'm assuming, is still on their timeline of sometime October, November.
Yeah, it's the middle of October, end of October's last night.
Okay, and then Home Federal's remodel is about complete. They're gonna make the switch this weekend and open up on Monday morning. So that should be, that corner should be getting busier. I emailed Brandon yesterday a little bit about some of the things that we've been doing with... Follow-up from some of the places. And we cameraed First Street Northeast. Can you just give us a quick little, what you saw there, didn't see there?
Sure. So yeah, previous council discussion we had was on First Street Northeast where we've seen the flooding into the homes and the basements there to the backing up of the sewers. So one of the actions we had was to go run a camera through the sewer line to make sure there wasn't anything in there that may be causing it to back up. We did find one spot that we're gonna do a little bit of a spot repair. We didn't find anything within that area that we feel we had to fix up that is kind of a smoking gun that would've been causing this. Again, we think it's more of a comprehensive eye and eye, just too much groundwater, too many slum pumps leaking into the sanitary sewer. Too much floodwater getting into our sewer ultimately, so backing up the trunk line that's kind of down there by the river. So that's where we're at on there. So there's no action that we immediately had to do to make a fix.
So no big hole or somebody drilled through it or anything?
Correct. Yeah, there was a damaged pipe, but we're gonna fix that, but it wasn't causing the backup. So there's actually a lot of backups downstream at that point, so it wasn't impeding the water because a lot of the flooding was actually downstream.
Okay, thank you. And then I said a couple of things correspondence. We have on September 19th, Thursday, a retirement for Elaine Gary who works for People's Energy Co-op. For the city, so that's her retirement. So if anybody's interested in that, I've got that here. Have that. And then I have this in my mailbox today. From, it looks like Audrey, Audra Lorbach?
Yep.
And it says, "Thank you, Casson City Council and Mayor McCurn." And I didn't have my glasses, so I have to read this to me. "Thank you. I always wanted to see the city government. I've always wanted to." Exclamation point. "Love, Audra Lorbach." So she must have sent this to me.
Our top readers.
Okay, so when she was at the meeting last time, she's always wanted to see it, and so she fulfilled her wish of seeing the council be. So best of luck to Audra and her reading for the next year. We'll move on. I don't have any cards for public forum. Old Business Ordinance Amendment, the proposed wording, that is in your packet.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure before the public hearing at the next meeting that the language was acceptable. Attorney Left is still working on the remainder of the liquor ordinance, but that removes the phrase so that Casey's can move forward with their liquor license.
This is the wording.
No more needed, just in case there's fragmented changes.
So this, does everybody remember what this was about? Dwayne, if you're working, okay. So it's, to make it consistent with what we've done before.
Yep.
I'm gonna back up. All right, so on your way out, if there's a card out here, if you want to just throw it out, if you want to say your name and address and tell us which, that'd be great.
First, I apologize. Ryan Christensen, soon to be 12, 1213th Avenue Northwest in Casson. So formerly from Manorville, living right next door to that address right now. Appreciate you guys letting me come and ask all the card. I apologize for that. First time. Watch the meetings online, then call the card, sorry. First, as a former Manorville City Council member, I appreciate all the work everyone does for the city of Casson. Seen a lot of the videos. You guys do work really hard, so thank you. I have a couple of just quick things. Like I said, 1213th Avenue. So I look at the map over here, it's, if I can come over here, sorry, I'm not on your mic. That's okay.
Yes, that's okay.
So 13th Avenue is right here, but there's a football field that goes through it. So I will be the only house as of right now with the farm behind us on 13th Avenue. I have had, I'm having Chris, I'm having Mike, Cole, builder house, Big Sky Builders. He has had extensive issues having to get businesses to come, subcontractors to come to the right address because they go to this 13th Avenue. Because it's past where the football field is. Our view is a curve. And I'm the only house on 13th, but 13th has an entire field between it. So they think 13th stops here and doesn't go any further. So there's no signage right now because we're, obviously, we're not finished. We should be finished this month with the home. But there's no way for anyone to know that that's still 13th Avenue. So I don't know what process I would have to go through as a homeowner, or Mike would have to go as the builder to get some kind of street sign put up or something. So that even when FedEx, they went, they put everything back. I ordered things last week. They send everything back to Under Armour because they can't find their address anywhere. So I don't know what the process is, so if there's someone that could, after I fill out the card, could help me with that, that would be greatly appreciated. And there are a lot, as that road does fill up, there are now about six or seven houses on 12th, which goes across, which is a street through it. There are six or seven houses more being built. It's starting to get busy, so I don't know if there's some kind of street signage or something that would help. There's about 20 families with kids. It'd be nice if something could get added, maybe a yield sign at that intersection eventually. I know you have to do a study possibly. It's not a big intersection, so I don't know what your process will be here in Casson for that, but those are my two things.
Okay, yeah, if you want to just fill the card out, either name it in a contact email or a phone number. And I'll get it to the right person that can get back.
We'll get it.
We'll get it to Public Works.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. Okay, new business, preliminary budget. So it's really two parts. A is the, you know, we have a resolution approving the preliminary budget for 2019. That's the first step in doing the budget because we can't really talk about a budget, what we're gonna spend until we actually set the levy. So what the preliminary levy is, just for everybody that's here, is we'll set tonight a preliminary levy, which is basically, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it as a percentage over last year. And what that is, is gonna be the maximum amount that the levy could be of the budget and levy that we approve in December. So come December, we'll actually set the levy that's gonna actually go to the county to be collected. Tonight, we're just gonna set, here's a number that we can't go over. We can go less than that, but we can't go over. So then that, then that comes down then to the departments and everything else from here on out. We've got, just for the council, we've got contract negotiations coming up starting in October. So we don't really know what that firm number's gonna be yet. We've got a health insurance number, which I understand we aren't gonna know till probably the first week of December, possibly, maybe sooner.
Maybe sooner.
Maybe sooner, but possibly the first week. We aren't gonna know what that hard number is yet. So how it'll work, we'll set up a levy percentage tonight on an increase over 2019. And then as far as the budget goes, we have to wait till those other things fall in line and actually set the budget once we know those other, kind of some hard costs that are gonna be. So I'll open it up for council, you know, as far as levy goes. Does anybody have a preference as far as, you know, I have a, in my mind, I'm just gonna be quiet till everybody else has a chance to talk. I look at it as an increase over last year, and then we have to live within that. But, you know, costs go up, you know, labor and benefits, the health insurance. Hopefully, not gonna with this year, the health insurance is gonna be under better control where it's not some of the increases we've seen before. But those things go up, and there's really not a lot we can do about it. So there's gonna be a three, four, five percent increase just based on those inflationary things before we have anything else that we can do. Capital or anything else. So last year, it was just shy of seven percent. Year before that, we had a zero. The two previous years, I think it was eight percent a year from the previous two or three years before that. So that, you know, seven to eight percent range seems to be the average. Just for your information, two things I like to look at, because I like numbers. You know, so we're gonna set a levy based on a percentage over last year, and that's gonna equate to a certain dollar amount. That's gonna go out to be levied against the property value in the city of Casson. So if we have a maximum levy, say of eight percent, a few years ago, that doesn't necessarily mean everybody's taxes are gonna go up eight percent. It depends on the property and the value of the property, if it goes up or down. The tax, somebody's taxes could actually go down, some might go up 12% based on the value of their property. So we're gonna send this number to the county, and then they're gonna divide that. Last year, we set $3.1 million with our levy, and then they divide that equally among people's share of the property that they own as taxable market value. So the proposed taxable market value that we got from the county that's next year is gonna be about an increase of about 18% over last year, over 2019. And that's partially because property values have come up, just because valuations have come up in some parts of town. That's also about 47 or 48 new homes that weren't on the tax rolls before. So we've got additional property, additional building that's going in that's new taxable value. So in theory, on average, you know, we're looking at our tax rate in 2019 was 77, .77. You know, an eight percent increase is about .71. So our rate would actually go down because we have more property value for more dollars. So just, just for, you know, food for thought as you think about that. We don't like to use that as a for sure, because until we get to 2020, this is their estimate. So we don't wanna base it on that, say, hey, look, we have more capacity. Well, there could be assessment challenges and different things that come along if they can lower that by the time it's actually collected. It's just kind of a, something to watch, but nothing really to hang your hat on. So I'll just open up. Does anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts, where you would like to see some different things? And everybody needs to realize, whatever we set it at, we can't go up from there.
Correct.
This is a ceiling amount. I think we should start at eight percent. Because it can drop, we can drop it, but we can't go back up.
Right. Is that your target? Or is that where you were starting?
That's where I'm starting.
Because right now, I've had about 13.
Yeah.
Right.
So every year, Nancy sends out, Finance Director sends out to all those department heads, and they kind of come back with, hey, this is what we'd like to do, or have, or add, or whatever it might be. And then we get that, and with those kind of wishes, but there's also two that aren't on there. That's about 13 point, 13 and three quarters percent. There's two more that would add about eight percent, so it'd be about 20, 21 percent. The two other S's that were added on there, they came in late. Bottom line is, to me, that's too high.
Yes.
And that's just too high. And it's tough. There's a lot, I mean, look what we've been doing for the last 90 days. There's a lot of things we need to do that need to get done, right? But we also have to be able to pay for it. And that's part of the handcuffs we have a little bit as yet. Could we do that $10 million project and bond for it? Sure could, if everybody wants the taxes to go up 25 percent. I just don't know from the people I talk to that that's really the majority that want that to happen. So we have to kind of piecemeal this stuff together over the years. And hopefully, we're coming down a good road with the plan we have as far as targeting, doing these spot repairs as we can to make some changes. So Lonnie, eight percent. Mel, anything that you've thought?
I think eight's gonna be even.
I know, it's gonna be tough.
It's gonna be tough because we're gonna have at least four to five just in wages and benefits. And then if we wanna add anything to do anything, we're not giving ourselves much room.
No.
And if we're at 19, I, I mean, as much as I don't wanna say it, I don't wanna see taxes going up, but if we wanna work on stuff. I might even push towards 10, just because we have things we need to work on. We can always come down.
The thing is, the citizens, taxpayers need to realize, if they like living in this town, like the conditions that they're living in, it costs money to do it. I would like to keep it down, but
I would too.
In all seriousness, if we want to keep what we have, we have to keep the maintenance going. We have to keep the repair going. And I don't know if even eight percent will do it.
Well, I don't either.
Maybe it needs to be 10.
And I would agree with Dan in terms of if this is the ceiling, then let's not undershoot where we're starting. Because we can bring it down as long as we can.
You are correct. I agree.
Because we can't give, we can't give every department everything they want.
No.
In one year. We can work with them, but we gotta
Even at 10%, we can't give them everything.
No, but we can give them some to help the city move forward. That's just my input. So I guess it's up to me to state my opinion. And I, I trust that the department heads and Nancy have done their due diligence to try to be as conservative as they can while addressing their needs. So having been down this road once before or multiple times before. I just assume see the preliminary left as it's proposed and look at a target of eight, nine percent. If we can get there, I think we're still experiencing some of the fallout from the zero percent from a couple of years ago. And we have to get back to a workable situation.
I agree. Okay, Chris, it's your turn. Yeah, and I guess I'm probably all over the board on this. I see a lot of things we need to do, but I've also got a lot of things I need to do at my business, and I've got a lot of things I need to do at my house. I can't just magically, we want to raise my income by 13% because I wanna do it. So that's where I'm torn. I see a lot of things we do need to do, and I think we're making some good steps toward that. But not everybody just gets to, we have to look at, we were elected to be responsible with taxpayers' money. I think we have been. Sometimes that means making difficult decisions or waiting on some things, because, I mean, you know, the majority of our taxpayers are on the same boat. Just because we want it, doesn't mean we can have it. So I, I just wanna see as much constraint as possible in a smart way. Just because it is a sensitive thing, because unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, I get to talk to a lot of people that pay taxes with businesses that I'm in. You know, incomes have not gone up 13% a year for most of the people in town.
I agree.
For the majority of people in town. So I would just have to, I'm fine with preliminary, whatever it was need, but just keep in mind, just from a perception is reality. I talked to literally hundreds and hundreds of people at my place of business every year that tell me how much their taxes went up. When in reality, it wasn't, because that proposed statement that they get in December is what their taxes are going up. It does not matter what the statement says in March. As most of it is. If it always says your taxes are going up 13 and a half percent, my taxes went up 13 and a half percent last year.
Right. Because that's totally
It does not matter what the other one says. That's just what that piece of paper says they get. So I'm one vote, so I'll, I'll vote with Hall or L. And I go, I'd like to see it on the lower end of eight or nine percent for a cap and work with that. But I'll entertain a motion for...
Chris, can I just say, we did invite the public, if you wanna ask if they have any comments before you make a vote?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Right?
I just wanted to get on, you know, people will pay for what they like. You know, I came here from Rochester. I looked at the tax, went up and the house that I was buying in Byron versus Casson. Byron was a little bit higher, but I still came over here and I seen what I liked. And then a lot of younger generations are would be willing to pay for it. That's just my opinion.
No, that's where you're here. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else?
Do? 10% whittle it down. You gotta get, you gotta get these streets fixed and it's water. Problem solved. I think if you let the public know that you're really gonna concentrate on, obviously, you've started, you know, with the water project, but just keep that momentum going.
Okay.
Beats water in the basement if they can upgrade. I'm sure you all know how these pipes are underground. It's not gonna get any better.
Sure.
You know, infrastructure.
Thanks, Tim. Anybody else? Ever? Nope.
You know, I would, I would echo what you said about perception being reality. But I would also say that don't cut yourselves short either. You know, if I understand correctly, 13% is the
It's the very top.
We could be, that would be the top.
And we have three months to whittle it down.
And just calculating what that would mean for our household would be a little painful. But knowing that that's your cap and your intention is that you want to bring it down, I think that helps absolutely. And then, you know, as, as you said, we want, we want everything fixed. And to get it fixed, it doesn't come free. And I think deep down, when people think about it, as you said, if they hear that this is what's being looked at for being fixed, we wanna do these improvements. I think that the general populace is going to see that, understand, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't come cheap. And then again, counter that with the idea that it sounds like most of you would like to be around eight percent, give or take a percentage regardless. Don't cut yourselves short.
If there's a year to do it, this would be the year, because everybody, you know, it's on the radar that things are, infrastructure needs help.
I've talked to Charlie out there quite a bit, and we've got, there's a lot of big, big problems in this town. Because I, I know what I'm talking about, because I was on the street and stuff for 30 years, so I know. I could make 10 pages of problems here. One, well, I don't wanna say too much here, give myself into trouble, but this flooding has occurred for 30 years, and nothing has been done. I had Lance Park flooded for every year, just about, for 30 years, and nothing has been done. And the streets are atrocious. And Charlie said he can't get cold mix. That's one of the little problems too. Can't get cold mix at all. It's gotta be strictly hot mix. But they're
Thanks, Eric.
That's bad.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Appreciate that. Anything else from council? Okay, any motion?
I'll make a motion to set the preliminary budget for 2020 as the $3,549,327 has presented, which represents a 13.72% increase.
I'll second that. Anything else? All in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, everybody. Now, as far as the budget goes, Nancy, do we need a separate motion on the budget that was presented with that?
I, I'd like that.
Yes, it's a preliminary budget.
Yes.
So that budget that, Dwayne, just for the levy portion of it, the budget that goes behind it that was presented by everybody, the preliminary approval of that will be on which every line there can change if we want to. So I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make that.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks Mel. All in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. We've got three months of good work to do here. Administrator's report.
Okay, a couple of items here, a couple relating to the flood. Number one, though, we may be receiving some billing permits. And Council had approved waiving the fee for those billing permits when it was related to the flood cleanup. The consideration has come up that permits, there's a couple that might be, instead of just restoring it, are upgrades to address problems or essentially to mitigate. And it's a costly procedure to go through, what the cost difference might be between the two different building permits. But we wanted to have council determine if we waive building permits related to flooding, if there are upgrading, what they're doing. Here's an example, a lot of it came into a lower level back door, or maybe it was a regular level. But instead of putting the door back in and restoring everything, they wanna actually wall it up so it doesn't happen again. But it's different. So we need a little guidance on, on what we're
Excuse me, I'm in favor of letting them wall it up. I mean, that difference of, it's gonna benefit them handouts for the future, considering I have plenty of costs.
I have no problem with that myself. If it's, if it's to repair, so they damage the door and the frame and whatever, if they're gonna repair it back to the same state, fine. If they're gonna mitigate something so that if it happens again, they don't have to worry about the problem, I look at those as kind of the same. It'd be different if they said, hey, we're gonna put this wall here, that, and while we're doing it, we're gonna put on a deck, and we're gonna do this, and well
Now, that's a whole nother
That'd be, you know, then we have to kind of sort that out. But if it's to repair or mitigate any future damage because of the water, I would say, my opinion.
Yes.
Anybody else? I agree.
Okay, well, thank you for that direction.
And that'll save you guys too, because I know you, you would have to go through and decide which is, not it. This way, it should be easier for you.
Well, well, right now, we'll assume that those that come in will be reasonable medication efforts.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, the second item is, just like we brought last week with the SEMCAT, our last meeting with the SEMCAT teacher arrangements. This is another one where we have an agreement with the Salvation Army. Again, a wonderful program to help out some of our residents, and we're just asking for you to approve this agreement as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the Salvation Army teacher agreement. Thanks Mel. Any other discussion? All in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The T-Mobile amendment, we have T-Mobile who still rents our water tower space for cell towers. They're being very proactive with their contracts, and they have already put out an amendment to carry it further in the future. We did the math. They pass straight up a 3% increase each year, and these terms reflect that. And, you know, they're just putting the, you know, tying it together. Melanie, do you have any comments about?
Aside from that, I can just point out.
So we're just asking for you to approve the amendment to the contract.
I'll move to approve. I'll second that. Thanks, Dan. All in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Fee or amendment.
This includes two pieces. One is laying the groundwork for the amendment to the ordinance to reflect the changes in the state liquor laws and licensing. With the small brewers and breweries and brew pubs. to reflect the changes in the state liquor laws and licensing with the small brewers and breweries and brew pubs. So we've created a fee ORNIMs to reflect that. We did compare it to a few other communities. We also took note of our own fee ORNIMs with respect to the liquor licenses and the brew pubs, the small brewers, whatever, would all be intoxicating with theirs as opposed to a three point two malt liquor license. So we felt that two hundred dollars was still quite reasonable, but still at the level of an intoxicating alcohol. And then the other piece is the arena committee had, and the ice arena manager, had proposed their fees for the current season. So they always come a little late, it lags a little because we're moving into the ice season. So they have the new rates and so we need to update our fee ORNIMs to reflect those proposed fee increases as well. So you've got the two pieces and it's amendment to the fee ORNIMs that we already have in place.
Any questions for Nancy on that? Three dollars and a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Stan. About a second?
Second.
Thanks, Duane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, great. And then the last one is you had approved the flood debris extension through receipt dated September fifteenth. The mayor is aware of a few who have requested extensions. And so we'd just like direction to approve any known extensions for various reasons for the flood debris. Otherwise, we'll still stick with the September fifteenth date.
Most of us think here, we've got two situations. One, a woman called me there today, she was beside herself. She had a service that came and took it all away and they aren't invoicing her because they're behind. And she's not sure she'll get the invoice by the fifth. So I tore up and talked to her, but I think we can reasonably grant her that it was from the flood debris. And then another gentleman, and I don't know if he has, sorry, I'll follow him. But had kind of some specialized rock work in his basement with a fireplace. And they had to remove the rock to get to the sheet rock behind it. But there was only a certain contractor or two that could do it and they haven't got to it yet. So once they get to that, there will be all the sheet rock and stuff from behind and they can go. So I think if those two are, you know, they're working with us, letting us know, we can grant those two extension. It should be done with that.
Communication is key.
Yeah, so they let us know, I think we do that if it's okay with you guys. Do you need a motion for that? I'd say so. I'll move to grant the extension to the two people that have contacts. About a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Engineer's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just one item tonight, there's a little subdivisions, the Smith Sanitary Sewer Service erosion. That comes from the last council meeting, the Smiths here. We're here at the meeting, the direction at that point was that myself and Charlie Bradford, we're instructed to go meet with the proper owners, so we did. And then we've ultimately brought back what's in your council packet. There was some late additions here on some of the pictures in there. So it may look kind of new to you, it may not have significant depth this weekend. So bringing that back to ultimately look for some direction from the council tonight. It's not necessarily a clear issue, it's not quite black and white, it's a little bit gray here. So let's kind of talk through it and ultimately look for some direction from the council. So with that said, what we're looking at here is the little subdivision. We've got a couple of maps in there, that is the rural subdivision, kind of east of the high school, west of the wastewater treatment plant facility, it's a rural subdivision. It has a larger drainage way that kind of drains through the project there. You can kind of see it on that zoomed in aerial map there, larger channel there. That is in a drainage easement through the flooding process, that is a drainage easement in there. And there has been some experience, some erosion in there. You can see it on the third map there, where you can see the culvert. That's myself standing on the Smith's driveway there and you can kind of see a pool of water showing downstream of that culvert where there's been some erosion. It's kind of hard to see there in the picture, but you can kind of see that long line, I kind of box it in there. But underneath the water is actually there a sanitary sewer service. So the sanitary sewer mains out in the street, there's a long service to not only the Smith's home, but a lot of homes out in that area. And there wasn't a lot of cover on the pipe to begin with, but as we eroded and scoured out downstream of these culverts, this is kind of the first of probably many here if we continue to see erosion to become exposed. In the last flood event, that sewer service actually broke. Then we had a large amount of water in that channel, went to our lift station, flooded our lift station, I and I, caused some flooding and some pumps to kick off and whatnot. So obviously a problem that, from our side of things, we want to see addressed. With that said, these are private driveways, private culverts with private services. So it gets a little bit gray now because we have a public drainage way through there. Because again, there's a city easement to that area. There's been upstream development from the city side of things that we've built, you know, Sixteen Street. We've done some other smaller projects through there. So with that said, again, the sewer service exposed, broke, flooded. This is at risk again. This is currently exposed, if we get another large rain event, this could definitely happen again. So obviously, it's on our public work staff to look at if we do experience flooding here tonight and tomorrow. So we move forward with talking to the city's on-call contractor to get an estimate to do some work out there. Then again, as in your council package, it's slightly over thirteen thousand dollars. That's to replace that sewer service with some beefier pipe. And then ultimately, kind of fill in that hole with some rock. So when the water comes through that culvert, it hits some rock and is a more stable situation than what we currently have to protect that sewer service. Again, that's thirteen thousand and to repair that service, to rip it out and stabilize. So that's kind of where we're at. It's gray, it's obviously got some costs here to do the work. Now, with that said, we did submit this little subdivision, the subdivision as a whole, through the last disaster declaration, we submitted that for funding a month or so ago. Nancy and I, it was last Thursday, were just told that this project is going to be fundable, the whole little subdivision in addition to this area. We were thinking at that point, we submitted for a hundred and fifty thousand to do the whole channel. So not only across the Smith residents, but other residents downstream and upstream. But out really having it sculpted at that point, we're kind of under the gun to figure out exactly what we're gonna do. So we submitted anyway, it is going to be fundable at the ninety percent level. And again, we've been told that the governor has not signed the disaster declaration fully, but we've been told to move forward with our work. So I would believe that this would be fundable because it's problem number one of probably a few services in this area that need to be looked at and stabilized. So again, ninety percent fundable likely if it's signed by the governor, we've been told to. In addition to that, we have submitted for some mitigation funds. So the disaster declarations only get it back to the way it was with no benefit, which we're doing here. We're just filling in up erosion hole in theory. We have submitted additional funding for mitigation funds, which is to mitigate future funding, which could be upstream ponds in different areas or upsizing culverts and do a, I think it was like two hundred and fifty thousand. So Nancy and myself are still working on that. So we don't know if that's going to be funded or not. So that's kind of a sidebar as we have some additional funding asked from the state for the mitigation that we're working on still. So looking for some direction from the council on moving forward where obviously we can complete the work. Who pays for it? Again, it's a little bit gray. But again, we have it likely ninety percent funded.
So many feet of pipe are they planning on putting in, do you know?
I think it was twenty feet, we're gonna go around the channel, which was, yeah, fifteen to twenty feet is what we're looking at to kind of get span across bank to bank with some scheduled four.
Five, six feet.
Yeah, glued together. Right now, they actually had to cut that pipe so when it was flooded, God bless your public work staff, was actually in like neck deep wastewater. We'll cut the pipe and actually kind of splice it back together to keep the river from flowing in there. So it's kind of got a little plastic rubber coupling holding the pipe together now, which is, you know, inadequate if we have a significant flood. So we need to, we need to do something regardless here. But again, it's a little gray.
It's gray, but it's unique. It's the pumping waterway is what has been collecting water over these years from different sources and now we're shoving. The whole flood mitigation project going forward is we've got a lot of work to do on kind of some of the misgivings from the past that maybe the pond wasn't put in ten years ago like it should have been or whatever, and now that's causing this erosion.
Yep.
So that's what makes it unique. It's not just all we're gonna have to deal with.
It's not just city either, it's the school. The more they build, blacktop, the more water runs into that ditch too.
Yeah, that's the city though.
The city could, I know that. Just saying. Oh, I know. At first, I think we have, we, something got to be done there.
I would agree.
I would agree. So if any motion comes to action, I'm going to need to abstain because I may be personally benefited from any action. Do you have an idea when they would send funds?
I haven't heard that yet, but it's always out of the fact. So if you get it this year, odds are it's gotten into, well, into.
Right.
So if we say this ago, Ames is ready to do this before?
Correct.
Yep. So we're gonna be reimbursed ninety percent of the thirteen thousand.
Correct.
Another question. If they're gonna do it, would you do on the other side of eleven thousand of our pieces at the same time? Will that is?
The way we're approaching this is this is more of a semi-emergency repair. So we're proposing to do this repair, you know, immediately or in short order. Get this one fixed up because it has broke, it is exposed, it's at risk of failing again. And then we would come back and either quote or do a larger project. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. We want to put probably a whole package together, plans together, and then go out and publicly bid that or at least quote it out to multiple contractors as more of a city project. We have some other projects we might look in there. So that's more of the idea that we would do the project, the larger project is a separate project.
This is the repair that's urgent.
Correct. Be directed.
But if we re-paved it, we won't have to do anything to it later.
Correct, yep.
Okay. So if we wouldn't get these funds, do we have the money to pay for this?
Yes.
Okay. Then it's no question, it needs to get done. I, the only thing I don't want to set a precedence because the city rules are it is your service from the main to the house.
Correct.
The only thing I'm gonna say is this is rather unique because there is a utility or a water easement through this. And it does, if it does break, it affects everybody's dollars by dumping water into the sanitary. So this is unique. That's the reason I'm gonna go along with it.
I don't disagree with any of this.
Okay.
Anything else?
Just a motion for moving forward. And with that said, if we get signed on the dotted line from the governor that we've secured these funds, I was planning to have an open analysis with the property owners out there to talk about what we have funded and what the project is. Specifically, we're providing some temporary funds to access the channel and whatnot. So start working with those property owners at that time to move some stuff forward. But hearing about it later at the council meeting. So understand, funded to repair for the channel that's eroded, we're working on funds to mitigate.
Make a motion to proceed with this repair needed to repair.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That was it.
And I have a statement.
I have one.
May I ask something? Better bleach and barricades by path of flooding.
That's county, we could talk, we could certainly talk. The county maintained by the best, yeah. We can send, I'll send an email to her, Nancy, can we just send something to Matt Moss? Just have them add that their emergency response when there's flooding that someone can do a barricade. Thank you. Okay. And then, just a quick question for you. So the state disaster declaration, so that hundred and fifty, we're hoping to give for that area. And then beyond that, FEMA funds that came from the flood, the six billion dollar pot. Have we heard anything more about?
That's the mitigation fund, so.
About the application deadline or?
Yeah, that's what, and we gotta get a hold of Jen there, Jennifer, follow up with her.
Okay.
So, no, we're working on it.
Okay.
No, we haven't answered yet.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Personnel, just one note, there's nothing here to, no action either, but we do have an intern at the water department, a local student. So it's always nice to have a local student coming back to intern at our local utilities. So we've got that help out there, which is good. And then we're gonna go to the attorney's report and we're gonna go to closed session to discuss the Wilford litigation. When the closed session is over, we reopen the meeting. Are we recording that? It's not gonna be recorded, it's a student litigation. So we'll close the meeting right now, we'll open it back up when we're done. And if you choose to leave during the closed session, thank you for coming.